Good afternoon, everybody. This is the Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee. I am Chair Isaac Gitzschleifer, Chairman of the Committee. To my right is Councilman Costello. To my left is Councilman Conway and Councilman Burnett. We are going to go through each of the executive appointments. We will start with EA twenty-three dash zero-two-one-four, Paige T. Davis, Member of the Fire and Police Employees Retirement System Board of Trustees. If you can please come to the podium. Just introduce yourself. Tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in serving in this capacity. Thank you. You got to push the right button until your microphone turns red. There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm Paige Davis. I was born and raised in Baltimore, live in Baltimore City now. I am the Director of Research at T. Rowe Price and Associates right up the street. And I also head up our Associate Analyst Program. So those are the future investment talent at T. Rowe. I'm honored and privileged to serve on this board and bring my twenty-plus years of investment acumen to the Board of the Fire and Police Pension Fund.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? And I see also we have Councilman Torrance here as well. Sorry, missed you.
Thank you, Chair.
All right. Thank you very much. And the next up is EA twenty-three dash zero-two-one-five, Philip Costa, Member of the Commission on Sustainability. He cannot be here with us tonight, so he sent the letter instead, so we will take that as his testimony, unless anybody objects. That objection will keep going. Next up, EA twenty-three dash zero-two-one-six, Jay Morgan Grove, Member of Commission on Sustainability.
Thank you. Which button do I press?
It's already pressed.
It's all right. So I'm very interested to serve on this committee. I live here in the city. I've worked on urban sustainability and urban ecology here in Baltimore, first starting as an intern for Mayor Schmoke in nineteen-eighty-nine. I've written two books about urban ecology and urban sustainability focused on Baltimore. And I would like to bring my background in science to the commission. And of course, because this is unprompted, I forgot to mention that I work for the USDA Forest Service and head up the Baltimore Field Station, which focuses on research in Baltimore.
All right. Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions? Sir, if you don't mind coming back up.
No questions. No questions. I just want to, I've had the fortunate opportunity to have worked with Morgan for years now. I don't even know how long I've known you, but Morgan is a phenomenal public servant already at the federal level. And I think we would definitely be blessed to have his expertise and insight and perspective on the Sustainability Commission. So looking forward to voting in support of your nomination.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You're good.
Okay.
Next up, William Thomas, Member of the Fair Election Fund Commission. Can you adjust the microphone? If you want, we'll just move a seat over for you. You can just come up to one of the, one of the seats. Move that chair. There you go.
My name is William Tipper Thomas. I'm here to, I guess, say yes to my nomination for the Fair Elections Fund Commission. I'm an system engineer by day, working for the Department of Defense. I also happen to run a nonprofit organization that mentors middle school youth in the STEM fields. I was also a member of the Maryland City District Commission, commissioned by Governor Hogan. I'm a grassroots organizer, and I look to bring my problem-solving skill set to this commission to ensure equity.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions? All right. Thank you very much. And now we are going to go into, we'll do a vote on these nominations before we go into the final one of the evening. Okay, first up is EA, well, it's not in the same order. EA twenty-three dash two-one-four, Paige T. Davis, Member of the Police and Fire Retirement System. Do I have a motion to approve this nomination?
Second.
Moved by Torrance, seconded by Burnett. Yes.
Chair Schleifer votes aye. Mr. Burnett. Mr. Burnett votes aye. Mr. Costello. Mr. Costello votes aye. The Vice President is absent. Member Ramos is absent. Mr. Torrance.
Aye.
Mr. Torrance votes aye. Mr. Conway.
Aye.
Mr. Conway votes aye. Mr. Chair, there are five votes, any affirmative, no negatives. We can go to second reader on Monday.
Thank you. Congratulations. Next up, EA twenty-three dash zero-two-one-five, Philip Costa, Member on Commission on Sustainability. Do I, okay, do I have a second?
Costello moves.
Seconded by Burnett. Yes.
Chair Schleifer votes aye. Mr. Burnett.
Yes.
Mr. Burnett votes aye. Mr. Costello.
Aye.
Okay. The Vice President, Member Ramos, absent. Mr. Torrance.
Aye.
Mr. Torrance votes aye. Mr. Conway.
Aye.
Mr. Conway votes aye. Mr. Chair, there are five votes, any affirmative, no negatives. Second reader on Monday.
Thank you. Next up, EA twenty-three dash zero-two-one-six, Jay Morgan Grove, Member on Commission on Sustainability. Moved by Conway, seconded by Burnett.
Okay. Two-one-six, Jay Morgan Grove.
Conway and Burnett.
Conway moves. Burnett seconds.
Yes.
Chair Schleifer votes aye. Mr. Burnett.
Yes.
Mr. Burnett votes aye. Mr. Costello.
Aye.
Mr. Costello votes aye. The Vice President and Member Ramos are absent. Mr. Torrance.
Aye.
Mr. Torrance votes aye. Mr. Conway.
Aye.
Mr. Conway votes aye. Mr. Chair, there are five votes, any affirmative, no negatives. We can go to second reader on Monday.
Thank you. Next up, EA twenty-four dash zero-two-one-eight, William Thomas, Fair Elections Fund Commission. Moved by Burnett, seconded by Torrance.
Okay. Thomas, two-one-eight, favorable.
Burnett and Torrance.
Burnett moves. Torrance, second.
Yes.
Chair Schleifer votes aye. Mr. Burnett.
Yes.
Mr. Burnett votes aye. Mr. Costello.
Aye.
Mr. Costello votes aye. The Vice President and the, and Member Ramos are absent. Mr. Torrance.
Aye.
Mr. Torrance votes aye. Mr. Conway.
Aye.
Mr. Conway votes aye. Mr. Chair, there are four votes, any, five votes, any affirmative, no negatives. We can go to second reader on Monday. And that concludes the first round of votes.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. Whoever wants to, doesn't have to stick around. If you'd like to stick around, you can. And the moment we've all been waiting for, EA twenty-four dash zero-two-one-seven, Ebony M. Thompson, City Solicitor, Department of Law.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the committee for convening this hearing. I'm Ebony Thompson, Acting City Solicitor, and I'm honored to stand before you here as the first woman and first openly gay person to seek your favorable vote to serve as City Solicitor for the Baltimore City Department of Law. Well before my tenure at the Law Department, I have been a passionate advocate for our city. I was born and raised in northwest Baltimore, growing up with my brother and parents who worked their entire careers in Baltimore City. My mother is a retired Baltimore City Public School teacher and administrator, and both Mount Royal Elementary and Franklin Square Elementary. And my father is a retired electrician from Bethlehem Steel for over thirty years. They instill the values of continuous education and discipline in our household. I am a proud product of the Baltimore City Public School System, attending Hilton Elementary, Roland Park Middle School, and City College High School, where I recently had the distinct honor of being inducted into the prestigious Hall of Fame. It was at City College that I was introduced to law and solidified my interest in the profession. This was through the LawLinks program, a program connecting Baltimore City Public High School students to paid legal internships. In fact, I was a junior in high school when I first started working at the Baltimore City Department of Law as an intern. That I am now leading the very department that gave me my start is a full-circle moment and a testament to the importance of intentional investment in our students. After graduating from City, I went on to attend Brown University, majoring in economics. The summer between my freshman year and sophomore year at Brown, I requested to take my final exams early so that I could enlist in the United States Marine Corps Reserves and train in Paris Island. I graduated, became a Marine, and between my sophomore year and junior year at Brown, I attended Officer Candidate School for the United States Marine Corps in Quantico, Virginia, and graduated as undergrad, as honor graduate or first in my class. It was there I began to incorporate tactical and strategic approaches in all aspects, in all aspects of my life, and I continue that practice today. After graduating from Brown with a BA in economics, I worked as a private client group associate for UBS Warburg in New York City, obtaining my Series Seven and Series Sixty-three licenses. I later earned my MBA at American Intercontinental University while teaching myself real estate. I became a real estate investor, returned home, and enrolled in law school at the University of Baltimore School of Law. There I interned for Judge George Russell III, worked at Peter Angelos's law firm, served as both a research and teaching assistant, won our moot court competition, made law review, and was hired as a summer associate by Venable LLP. I was extended an offer to become an associate in the commercial practice, commercial litigation practice group after graduation, where I represented various clients in complex legal matters, including real estate litigation, regulatory approvals for mergers and acquisitions, insolvency proceedings, and labor and employment litigation. It was at Venable I was introduced to blockchain technology and completed a course through MIT's Sloan School of Management on Business Innovation and Application of Blockchain Technologies. I was promoted to counsel before accepting former Solicitor Jim Shea's offer to join him as his deputy, and I'm incredibly grateful for that opportunity, as former Solicitor Shea patiently waited a year to allow me to prepare financially for the transition from private practice to government as a single mother. Throughout my legal career, I have garnered several honors and awards, including recognition as a Rising Star by Super Lawyers in two thousand twenty-two, acknowledgement as Ones to Watch by the Best Lawyers in America in two thousand twenty-one, recipient of the Daily Records Leadership in the Law Generation JD Award in two thousand sixteen, and selection as a Leadership Academy Fellow of the Maryland State Bar Association in two thousand fifteen. However, one of my greatest honors I received was being able to deliver the commencement speech for my alma mater, UB Law's two thousand twenty-three graduating class. I have actively served on various boards, including Free State Justice, which provides legal support to low-income LGBTQ Marylanders, Stocks in the Future, a financial literacy program for Baltimore City middle school students, and I have served as Chair of the Advisory Board for the Fannie Angelos Academic Excellence at the University of Baltimore School of Law, a program that creates an exceptional pathway for students from underrepresented and underserved populations to enter the legal profession. Additionally, I have served on the Economic Development Committee of the Baltimore Metropolitan and Alimony Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. As a lifelong learner, I dedicate myself to staying informed about the law, emerging technology, and supporting skill sets to enhance my ability to advocate for and defend my clients as part of my daily routine. Since joining the city, I have earned certifications as a blockchain-in-law professional, a blockchain expert, and a generative AI expert through Blockchain Council. Outside of my work for the city, I cherish spending time with my three daughters, family, and friends. Although I previously played women's tackle football until I broke my leg, in a game during my tenure as Deputy City Solicitor, I have calmed down just a little bit, and I now find enjoyment, enjoyment practicing karate with my eldest daughter, with my father serving as our sensei. My passion for the law and our city is unwavering, and if confirmed, I will continue to leverage every resource available to advocate for the city's interests in various legal matters. This includes our opioid litigation, our ATF gun data lawsuit, our ghost guns lawsuit, initiatives to combat vacant housing utilizing blockchain technology, enforcement of our consumer protection ordinance, scrutiny of contracts and matters before the Board of Estimates, assistance in achieving full compliance with the consent decree, collaboration with the administration, the Maryland, the mayor's Office of Performance and Innovation, BSIT, Office of Equity and Civil Rights to develop the city's generative AI policy, and advancing new lawsuits in the coming year. Reflecting on the past two years, I am thrilled about the collective achievements we've made as a city. We have achieved historic results, we have saved lives, and we have embraced emerging technology together. Although our Law Department is a relatively small agency, with approximately sixty-eight attorneys and forty-four support staff, we have a very low vacancy rate at only four-point-five percent and operate as one of the most productive departments in city government. As the city's legal representative, our responsibilities are vast, ranging from reviewing and negotiating all contracts that the city enters into, to handling all litigation matters for the city, to providing advice and counsel to city agencies and employees. Our duties also include ensuring compliance under the federal consent decree that the Police Department entered in two thousand seventeen with the Department of Justice, advising on real estate acquisitions and dispositions, guiding the city during labor and employment negotiations and disputes, managing workers' compensation claims, and providing legal counsel to the City Council on legislation. Additionally, we play a unique role in recovering revenue for the city through our collections practice group and our affirmative litigation lawsuits against those harming our city and our residents. I want to take time just to express my deep gratitude to my exceptional deputy, Stephen Salisbury, my amazing Chief of Staff, Matthew Bradford, and our outstanding administrative team, practice group chiefs, and the entire Law Department for their tireless efforts and dedication to our department and the city, as they sincerely make me excited to come to work every single day. I joined the city on January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, just shy of two years ago, assuming the role as Deputy City Solicitor under the leadership of former Solicitor Jim Shea. From the outset, I immersed myself in my responsibilities. On my very first day, before fully settling into my office, I attended Mayor Scott's press conference addressing the tragic loss of three firefighters who courageously battled a fire at the, at a vacant property. During this event, Mayor Scott asked every agency for presenting recommendations to tackle vacant housing. I promptly collaborated with the Department of Housing and Community Development, Councilwoman Ramos, and the Circuit Court through Chief Administrative Judge Audrey Carrion. Within my first ninety days with the city, we successfully established a dedicated docket for interim foreclosures. While the traditional foreclosure docket can take years to finalize, our dedicated docket aimed to reduce that time to as little as four to six months with ongoing adjustments to meet our target timeframes. Concurrently, I initiated efforts to introduce the administration and relevant agencies to blockchain technology. This initiative aims to streamline the process of bringing vacant properties back into active use, particularly in neighborhoods still grappling with the consequences of redlining. Just last month, the Board of Estimates approved a three-year pilot to record our vacant property deeds on a blockchain. This positions Baltimore as the first municipality in the country to leverage this emerging technology in the fight against vacant housing. In my seventh month with the city, I assumed the role of interim Chief of Staff for the mayor's office while maintaining all the responsibilities and duties of Deputy City Solicitor. During this period, we crafted the legal framework for Mayor Scott's Squeegee Collaborative, exceptionally led by then Deputy Mayor Faith Leach, who now serves as our city administrator. Despite numerous calls for rounding Squeegee workers up, clearing corners, and resorting to mass arrests, we stood firm against unconstitutional practices to address the issue. Our approach transcended mere removal of the problem from visibility in a specific area of the city associated with prosperity. Instead, we developed a comprehensive solution that prioritized public safety and protected the rights of all of our residents. Through collaboration with business leaders, our community, Squeegee workers, nonprofits, our Office of Equity and Civil Rights, led by our first woman to serve as Acting City Solicitor, Chief Dana Moore, and the mayor's Office of African-American Male Engagement, led by the exceptional Dr. Andre Bundley, we achieved an impressive eighty-five percent reduction in crime associated with Squeegee workers. We also connected numerous former workers with mentors, training, and employment opportunities. Our concerted efforts resulted in the successful delivery of a comprehensive plan that adhered to the letter of the law, the constitutional application of the law, and the spirit of the law. For the past year, I have had the privilege of leading the Law Department, assuming the role of Acting City Solicitor in January two thousand twenty-three. Throughout the year, we achieved significant results. Following the oil spill in eastern Ohio, our collaboration with the administration, DPW, and the City Council led to the swift modification of Clean Harbor's discharge permit. Consequently, the company opted not to process any wastewater from the oil spill at their Baltimore facility. This decision played a crucial role in preventing the processing of wastewater at Back River and safeguarding our waterways from potential contamination. Regarding legislation, we drafted a new local ordinance aimed at preventing abusive, unfair, and deceptive trade practices against our residents. This ordinance empowers the city to pursue injunctive relief and fines against companies engaging in such practices within Baltimore City. Our collaboration with Councilman Schleifer, Chair of this committee, was instrumental and crucial. Recognizing the ordinance's significance, he agreed to introduce the legislation, while the omnibus legislation introduced by Councilman Dorsey remains in progress with the administration. Members of our affirmative litigation and advice and opinions groups joined efforts to prepare and testify on behalf of the ordinance. This collective endeavor resulted in the City Council's approval, which was subsequently signed into law by Mayor Scott in October. Presently, we are actively working with Delegate Elizabeth Embry to advocate for an increase in the statute of limitations from one year to three years during this legislative session. This extension is crucial to provide sufficient time for identifying companies violating the ordinance. Additionally, we authored the Reproductive Options for Everyone Act, which was introduced by Councilwoman Porter. The resolution urges that city funds should not be employed to facilitate the investigation of individuals seeking abortion care in Baltimore. The assigned committee conducted a hearing on the resolution, and I delivered testimony supported by comprehensive preparation from our advice and opinions and affirmative litigation practice group chiefs, Elena De Pietro and Sarah Gross, respectively. Having come across the concerning success of the book ban in Carroll County through our affirmative litigation group, we drafted a resolution opposing book bans in Baltimore City. We approached Councilman Torrance and the administration to propose a joint introduction leading to its approval by the City Council in November. To highlight some of our affirmative litigation cases from this past year, we initiated legal action against Hyundai and Kia for jeopardizing public safety and abusing police resources by failing to install industry-standard anti-theft technology in their vehicles. This resulted in a nationwide surge in thefts. This case was advanced last year when the cities and counties, including Baltimore, that filed against Hyundai and Kia prevailed against the company's motion to dismiss. Furthermore, our affirmative litigation division secured settlements exceeding nine-point-two million dollars in two thousand twenty-three from cases involving PCB contamination, antitrust issues, and opioids. In addition to this amount, we also joined another settlement in two thousand twenty-three, totaling approximately seven-point-two million dollars related to Walmart's conduct regarding opioids, which is set to be finalized this year. Notably, we recently concluded extensive fact discovery in the opioids case and presented our expert reports to the defendants in preparation for the trial scheduled for September of this year. We also addressed issues directly impacting our students and their families this year. Following the release of the Supreme Court Affirmative Action opinion last year, we thoroughly examined the entire opinion. We reached out to the deans of both of our law schools in Maryland, Dean Ronald Weiss of the University of Baltimore School of Law, and Dean Renee Hutchins of the University of Maryland School of Law. Our goal was to discuss the implications of the opinion and explore the best ways to support high school students preparing to apply to colleges in the fall. After consulting with the mayor, we decided to directly reach out to students through College Bound as an effective strategy to counter any potential chilling effect the opinion might have on college applications. Alongside my Deputy City Solicitor and Chief of Staff, I visited several high schools, participated in essay workshops personally, and contributed to the development of a workshop on essay writing that College Bound could implement across all their high schools. We have also achieved historic results in the past year with the consent decree. Just on Tuesday, the city filed a joint motion with the Department of Justice requesting the consent decree judge to declare the city in compliance with both, with both the transport of persons in custody and officer assistance and support sections of the consent decree. This holds significant importance as it marks the first instance in the seven-year history of the consent decree where the parties have been able to jointly petition the court to find BPD and the city in full and effective compliance with a portion of the, of the decree. Notably, this achievement of full compliance follows another historic milestone for the city. By implementing Mayor Scott's crime-fighting approach, including the group violence reduction strategy, and collaborating with the state's attorney's office, the Attorney General's office, and the US Attorney's Office, we successfully realized a twenty percent reduction in homicides. This represents the largest year-to-year decrease in the history of our city. This proves that constitutional policing and the reduction of crime are inseparable components of our law enforcement strategy. They are not disparate goals; rather, they are interconnected elements that reinforce each other. By maintaining our commitment to constitutional principles as the driving force behind our crime-reduction initiatives, we build a safer community where justice, fairness, and respect for individual rights guide our path forward. Now that the city has identified a successful formula for significantly reducing homicides, the Law Department remains dedicated to providing the mayor and our partners with all the necessary support to build on that success. That's why in December of two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, in collaboration with every town law, we initiated a lawsuit against the ATF to obtain the release of gun tracing data under the Freedom of Information Act. Achieving a twenty percent reduction in homicides without access to this crucial data is noteworthy, but we believe that having it could lead to even more impactful outcomes. The ATF contends that Congress restricts them from sharing this data, and we aim to challenge these limitations directly in court. We know that keeping the data secret prevents Baltimore and other cities from educating the public about the sources of illegal guns in their communities, and this benefits no one but the gun industry. Looking ahead, we have a number of cases on deck for two thousand twenty-four as well, which will be revealed when they become ready for filing. In short, the past year, I have been privileged to be a part of amazing efforts being made across this city. I am honored to be nominated for the position of City Solicitor and will do all in my power to- We know that keeping the data secret prevents Baltimore and other cities from educating the public about the sources of illegal guns in their communities, and this benefits no one but the gun industry. Looking ahead, we have a number of cases on deck for two thousand twenty-four as well, which will be revealed when they become ready for filing. In short, the past year, I have been privileged to be a part of amazing efforts being made across this city. I am honored to be nominated for the position of city solicitor and will do all in my power to support the great work being done by city agencies, our employees, our elected officials, and our citizens. Thank you so much for your time, and at this time, I'll take any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. You convinced me. Do we have any questions? Any questions from the committee? Go ahead, Councilmember Burnett.
I didn't have any questions. I just want to just thank you for your service. In your role as acting solicitor, I think you've led with nothing but professionalism, and I think a vision for what the department can be in taking on both local issues and engaging the, you know, national fight on, you know, environmental issues, car thefts. You know, we have the consent decree, compliance, all of that has been in your time here, and so you've been great to work with. Also, a great constituent. I'm proud to vote you in as someone that I both represent, but I also believe and have a high amount of respect for how you represent our city, so just want to say thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilman.
Thank you, and we will take public testimony. I see first up is Dean Weich. Want to come up to the podium?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. My name is Ronald Weich, and I'm the dean of the University of Baltimore School of Law. It is my honor to testify in support of the confirmation of Ebony Thompson to be the Baltimore City Solicitor. As she told you, the nominee is a graduate of the University of Baltimore School of Law, and I would note that Councilmember Torrance is also a graduate of our law school. And she is a proud graduate and a graduate who has remained involved in the law school, mentoring our students in the years since she graduated. She graduated in two thousand thirteen, and I had the privilege of presenting her with her diploma. And even at that time, she was already a pioneer, a trailblazer in the law. As she described to you, she not only had an undergraduate degree from Brown and an MBA, but she had served in the military, serving eight years in the U.S. Marine Corps Reserves. She was a star at the law school. She recounted some of her activities there. I'll just add that she graduated magna cum laude, and her work on the Law Review and with the Black Law Students Association made her a student leader. After graduating, she obtained a job at the prestigious law firm, the Venable Law Firm, and I think you'll be hearing from that law firm shortly. And I'll just note that while she was a star litigator there and a rising star in private practice, it is very admirable that she left private practice, a very lucrative practice, in order to engage in public service as the deputy city solicitor, a job that she took on in two thousand twenty-two. Of course, now she has been leading the law department as the first woman and openly gay person in that job with the title of acting city solicitor. I have observed Ebony Thompson in this role, and I've been enormously impressed. As a law school dean, I take a great interest in the legal affairs of this city. And I'm especially impressed with her work in a number of the areas that she highlighted, her work on housing and permitting law, her work on the affirmative litigation that the city is involved in, involving opioids and firearms and other such matters. And especially her work to ensure that the Baltimore City Police Department is compliant with the federal consent decree and her development of the legal framework for Mayor Scott's Squeegee Collaborative. I take pride in all of the students, Councilmen, Member Torrance, all of the students that graduate from our school, but I have special immense pride in Ebony Thompson. She did speak at our commencement ceremony last year, and I can tell you, I've invited twelve different speakers to our commencements over the years. I've been dean, and Ebony Thompson was the star, the best commencement speaker that we've had. She spoke with such passion and focus and energy. She inspired our students to use their law degrees for good, to use their law degrees to serve the public, and especially to serve the city of Baltimore. As I see it, Ebony Thompson has the word "acting" in her title only because the drafters of the city charter couldn't imagine a young lawyer as brilliant, capable, and ready to lead as Ebony Thompson. And so for these reasons, I strongly support her confirmation as city solicitor. I'll take any questions you might have.
Anybody? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, I think it says Elizabeth. Oh, Embry, okay. The way you wrote your last name, it was hard to...
It's the public school handwriting that I received, lessons I received. Chairman Schleifer, members of the committee, I'm so honored to be here today to speak in favor of the nomination of Ebony Thompson to be city solicitor. It's rare that you get to speak in public about someone you admire so much, so I'm really enjoying this chance. I've known Ebony since Roland Park Public Middle School. We were both there, and then after that, we both had the good sense and the good luck to go to Baltimore City College. We were not actually the same year, but I knew Ebony very well. We played sports together, but it's really because everybody knew Ebony. She was a force of positive energy, as she still is. She was exactly the same person then as she is now. She brought people together. I don't think there was anyone that she's ever met that she hasn't found some point of common interest with. Her very impressive career has a few through lines that I just want to highlight because I think they're relevant to being our solicitor. One is her commitment to Baltimore City, something that all of us share. With her talents, amazing talents, and the amazing things she's done, she could have gone anywhere after Brown and after business school, but she returned to Baltimore. She spent a lot of time, she touched on this, but working with communities and building equity and building specifically in the housing context. She went to law school here in the city. She's raising her three girls in the city, not far from where she grew up. And when she told me that she was leaving her job at Venable, and I knew how much she loved that job to become a part of the city law department, I was so happy, but I wasn't surprised at all. It just made sense to me. Another piece of being the chief lawyer for the city, well, or let me step back. Another through line I want to talk about is creativity. I have worked in the city law department. It was one of the best things I've ever done. I miss it. And a lot of the work is, you're defending the city, you're doing the work of the city. It's somewhat routine. It's important and hard, but it's somewhat routine. Approving contracts, providing advice, defending the city when they're sued. And I know that the team that Ebony leads now is a group of some of the most outstanding and committed lawyers in Maryland who do all these things exceptionally well. But as the chief lawyer for the city, part of that is also imagining how legal solutions for the challenges facing Baltimore in areas that haven't always traditionally been the purview of lawyers. And Ebony talked about the many, many ways the city has taken on that challenge. In fact, the city law department has been hitting it out of the park on a national level. On gun violence, the creativity means suing ghost gun manufacturers for the flow of illegal guns into the city. It means suing the ATF to force the absurdity of federal law into the open and into the courts to be decided there. In the context of the opioid epidemic, it means suing manufacturers and distributors of opioids. It means also, in that context, being brave enough to say, we're going to go forward. We're not going to take part in the state settlement because we think that is not a good settlement for Baltimore City, and we can do better. In the context of the environment, as Ebony talked about, it means suing manufacturers of PFAs and forever chemicals that have entered the city's waterways and the remediation of which is going to cost a lot of money and making sure that the manufacturers pay for it. It means protecting consumers. This body passed historic legislation creating the ability of the city to bring actions against manufacturers, excuse me, businesses that take advantage of consumers through abusive practices. And I know the law department with Ebony's leadership was a big part of advocating for your bill, Chairman, and I really appreciate that, and I'm glad to be able to work at the state level in extending the statute of limitations. As a city resident, I just want to say that I'm so proud every time I read about one of these lawsuits that the city is taking up to protect its residents. Ebony is the right leader and the right partner in the city, in the office of the city solicitor as the city continues to think boldly about how to use the law and creatively about banding together with other cities and other states and holding actors who have caused harm to the city accountable. She's also, she's a really good listener. She's a collaborator by nature. That's been true as long as I've known her for many decades. And she's shown how comfortable she is in the interlocking roles of policy and operations and legal analysis in the roles that she's had in city government. I think that's a unique quality, and she's shown that she excels in it. And the final thing I'll say is there's no one I've ever known who has more energy than Ebony Thompson. Just listening to her talk about all the things she's done, some of, many of which I knew. I've exhausted thinking about it, so I don't think, I don't think there's anyone out there who can give more to the city and is more creative in the ways that she will do that. So I'm just honored to be here. Thank you for listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Delegate.
Oh, I'm sorry. No questions.
Oh, any questions? Thank you. Next up, Sasha Judy.
Hello and good evening, Council. My name is Sasha Judy. I am currently a junior at Baltimore City College and, as you guys know, a city council page member. I met Ms. Ebony over the summer because I, like her, was a member of the Law Links internship. And over the summer, I was able to work here in City Hall for actually the second time. My first year at Baltimore City College, I was given the opportunity to work under Marilyn Mosby as a member of the Junior States Attorney Program. And there I was able to expand my horizons and learn about the nature of government in Baltimore City, meet figures like the mayor and other attorneys who work for the city, and basically give myself an opportunity to place myself in a role where I could see myself in the future. And then over this summer, I was given that opportunity again where I was a member of the Law Links internship, but this time working in the law department in a place where I could see myself as a lawyer, as someone who worked with legislation, filing opinions, doing research, and where I met Ms. Ebony Thompson. And after getting to know her, it was something that I found myself seeing, something that I could do, as well as seeing myself as sort of a mini version of her. Like Ms. Ebony Thompson, I went to Roland Park Elementary Middle School. And like Ms. Ebony Thompson, I am currently in city. And I've also done the Law Links program, and I work at City Hall. So putting myself here is essentially the manifestation of Ms. Ebony's dream. And not only where I worked over the summer, I was able to learn so many things about government, about legislation, about what the city is doing, about how they try to expand all the laws that they create, and what Ms. Ebony is doing to help make the city a better place, as well as learning fancy lawyer jokes like what a blue book is. And basically, Ms. Ebony Thompson is nothing short of the perfect person to help put the youth where they need to be. And I have always sort of seen myself in a place where I was in a government position or being a lawyer. And from, as far as I know, before I could talk, arguing with something that I've just been good at, and Ms. Ebony has given students the opportunities and given them the positions, as she stated, especially related to the affirmative action case, which I did end up doing research about. She's given us an opportunity to place ourselves in the law, in the rooms where we need to be, where we are able to speak about our future, and where we're able to delegate and learn about what legislation affects us, what laws affect us, and one day be able to change those laws ourselves. And being in this place today is a huge honor that I couldn't see myself doing anything else. It's where I need to be, where I want to be. And a lot of that, a lot of what I've learned, I've owed to being in this building, to being in these rooms, and especially to Ms. Ebony Thompson for all of the wonderful things that I've learned and all of the information that I will take with me when one day I am back in this room, maybe a little bit taller, and with a law degree. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm sure Solicitor Thompson will make sure she's here to testify in support of you when you're nominated as well. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't see anybody else signed up, but anybody else who wishes to testify is welcome to just walk up to the podium. Anybody? Nope. Okay, we'll move along then. We'll go into a vote on EA twenty-four dash zero-two-one-seven. Ebony Thompson, city solicitor, Department of Law. I'll move the nomination favorable. Do I have a second? Moved by me, second by Conway.
Ready for votes? Chair Schleifer?
Yes.
Chair Schleifer votes aye. Mr. Burnett? Mr. Burnett votes aye. Mr. Costello?
Mr. Chair, to Delegate Embry's testimony about, I think the last time I'll be saying acting solicitor Thompson and her energy level, I find it uniquely remarkable that you don't consume caffeine, which is a true statement. Mr. Chair, I vote aye.
Mr. Costello votes aye. Vice President is absent. Member Ramos?
Mr. Chair, I want to explain my vote. I'm an emphatic yes. I want to apologize to the committee and to Solicitor Thompson for my lateness, but I've had a great relationship, you know, with a lot of things that we're working on together. And I think you're the right person to move the city forward. Thank you.
Member Ramos votes yes. Mr. Torrance?
I couldn't let it pass. As a UB alum, I am immensely proud of you, but also as a person who you mentored my first year of law school, I still remember the A I got from your outline, so. But what I will say is that, and this is a charge I give to you because I know where your heart is, you live up to Charles Hamilton Houston's quote, right? You are a social engineer. Continue to be that social engineer, right? Because often we forget, and I say this as a person of color, we are five percent of the profession. We have to be trendsetters. We have to be social engineers. And I'm immensely proud of the way that you've led, your legacy that you're leaving, and also the fact that you are being lifted up on the shoulders of those who came before us. So with that, I vote emphatically yes.
Mr. Torrance votes aye. Mr. Conway? Mr. Conway votes aye. Mr. Chair has six votes in the affirmative. No negatives. This nomination can go to second reader Monday's meeting.
Thank you. Congratulations, Solicitor Thompson. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.